Yeah, it's positive, but it's.
Not what we want.
Yeah. Anyways, I'll.
I kind of expected that.
I'll just, when we're in camera, I'll just let people know, but we're not.
Everybody, this is Dave Meller. He's been with us for a couple of years, but he's just taken over as the general manager of engineering.
Welcome.
He's probably don't know who he is, so.
Yeah, he did the.
Gee, Mark, you got assistants everywhere.
Speed dating or.
That's why I gotta go. There's too many of us.
College meeting to order, special committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, February 1st, 2023. Next on the agenda, the blessing of land acknowledgement. I can ask Councilor Ben.
As we gather, we recognize that we are on Treaty III lands which are steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Canora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clarity in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts, so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Canora. Let these principles guide us in our decision making.
Thank you, Councilor. Item number C, public information notices. There are none. D, declaration of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Any member of council that has any declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof pertaining to any items as follows. Yeah, on today's agenda from a meeting at which a member was not in attendance?
Okay, I, Barbara Manson, I'm declaring an indirect pecuniary interest as it relates to item number one regarding to the budget. It's indirect and it's regarding my child. My son manages the NOHFC program.
Thank you. Okay, on to the agenda. Item number one, draft 2023 budgets.
Sure. So gonna just start off trying, I know we had a busy day on Monday, so just gonna start off trying to frame things up and then I'm gonna throw it over to Ryan to sort of provide a high level summary of where we're at. So in preparation for today's meeting, senior leadership team met and we spent some time reflecting on Monday's session. And first off, I just wanted to comment around expectations for timelines for the budget process. So we expressed on Monday a desire to sort of get through the capital budget this week with the intention of bringing it to Committee of the Whole on Wednesday, February 8th, and then to council on February 15th for approval. You know, upon reflection, administration recognizes that we've presented a lot of new information and that there's a lot of individual decision points to make in the budget process. And we also acknowledge that there's a lot of new history to provide here for, or a lot of history to provide for new counselors. So understanding that, I just wanna try and remove some of the pressure from council that's driven by time constraints. It's most important to us that we ensure that you have the time to make informed decisions and engage in a complete dialogue with one another as you're working toward making these decisions. And so if we're able to, by the end of tomorrow evening, come together around a capital budget, five-year capital budget, that's great. But we just wanna let you know that from a procedural standpoint, administration can work to establish additional meetings and use special meetings later in the month for the five-year capital budget if we need to. So I just wanna try and alleviate a little bit of pressure there. The one risk that I just do wanna reiterate regarding the five-year capital budget is the challenges that are presented by tendering and procuring these projects. And we did talk about that on Monday and we're happy to engage in further conversation on that and answer any further questions with council if they have it. I also wanted to provide a little bit more context to enhance your understanding of our process for preparing a preliminary budget. So the budgeting process actually starts in late June with departments and they start inputting their projects into the budgeting system. Those projects are then reviewed by the directors with their teams and there's a specific emphasis on need to have versus nice to have. We then use council direction, public feedback, asset management data, service levels, the strategic and other directional plans, funding sources, potential synergies such as completing water and sewer when we're working on the road at the same time, and any other relevant information to sort of separate the wheat from the chaff and get to the most necessary projects. And once the directors have narrowed down their submitted projects, the senior leadership team comes together with the finance department and we carry out a rigorous review. And so just to give you a perspective, we spent three days this year carrying out that review and we made determinations for what individual projects to drop off and what ones to advance. And after that process, finance compiles our final decisions into the preliminary budget and we bring that forward to you, to council for one final vetting process, which we started this week. And so I've received some questions just regarding, you know, what is administration recommending? So the budget that we've presented is the recommendation. We would not have put anything in the budget that we felt was frivolous or unnecessary. The only exception that I would say to that, and we will dig on this a little bit, is that there is an unfunded page at the back that has a few items in there which we will get to. And the reason that those aren't included in the preliminary budget is because they came up during the preliminary budget drafting process. Literally, one thing just came up on Monday, just to give you some sense. So again, I just wanna reiterate, the recommendation is the budget that we've put forward. We do have some options to sort of reduce the net tax levy impact, which we will get into. But I just wanted to share some important facts about the budget that we're presenting. $16.6 million investment in hard infrastructure in 2023. So that's not including water and sewer and that's not including solid waste. That's more than $5 million more than we contributed last year to capital. We have $70.5 million that we're intending to invest in hard infrastructure across the next five years. And that includes over $4.2 million invested north of the bypass and in our rural roads, with more anticipated to follow likely once we get our rural roads studied. We're maximizing external funding to stretch our dollars even further, as evidenced by the once-in-a-generation injection of grant funding into the Parks and Recreation System over the next few years, which I believe is just shy of $10 million of government money that we've been, that we're injecting into the Parks and Recreation System. So I hope with some of the pressure around timelines relieved, we've put together a short presentation to recap where we're at, big picture, and to frame up our discussion for today. A major focus of the presentation is to establish some clear decision points for council and to provide some low-hanging fruit options to reduce the net tax levy impact to residents. So I'll hand it over to Ryan. The final thing that I just wanna say is the city of Canora is not immune from the same thing that all of us are experiencing with trying to manage our own households. Insurance costs are up, fuel costs are up, taxes are up, utilities are up, you know. And so we understand that everybody is feeling those impacts of inflation and of the global economy. And I just wanna make, you know, really clear, you know, that the city is feeling those same impacts. And so the very first thing that Ryan is gonna start off with, and I just, I wanna leave this here. If we just did the exact same as we did in 2022, if we did not do anything differently, we were already starting at an 8.19% tax increase, which is driven by things that are beyond our control. Your inflation, your utilities, costs of contracts that have gone up, you know, the built-in increases to collective agreements, grid bumps, you know, changes with more people enrolling in our pension. So those are uncontrollable. And I think that's a really powerful number and I just wanna put it out there in the community and to council. 8.19% was where we were started before we even sat down to add anything in. So Ryan, I'll let you take it from there.
Okay. Do I need to? Do you want to do this?
Um, no.
No? Okay. All right, thanks, Con. Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to, what we're trying to do is just kind of give you, take you back through, give you kind of maybe a big picture view exactly where we stand today. Kyle, so what would it cost today just to deliver the 2022 program, capital and operating? It would cost us an additional 8.19% increase. Why? Inflationary increases, salaries, like as you all know, you know, in our everyday lives, fuel, utilities, insurance, those things are going up for everyone, same as, same with the city of Canora. So we feel those as well. So that's what's reflected in there. There's also our regular salary cost increments, negotiated increases in there. So this would be same level service, same capital program. So to put that into perspective, we have a 468, which has been kind of our our rate, our amounts that we've kind of put forward in some of our auctions and some of in the book. So what does that look like for impacts to residents? So we put together a chart that says, you know, annually, if you are a median, you know, property taxpayer of $2,500, you'd be paying roughly $108 annually, or $9 a month if it was at the 4% level. If you're at, if we're at 8% level, that's $216 a year, 18 bucks a month at that median level. So if we go, we have $5,000 property tax payer there as well as a $10,000 rate payer. So you can see that the, the impact, this is not to minimize anything, it's just to kind of give some perspective around what rates, like, are we talking about rates? We're throwing around rates. This is what it would look like or have impact to our rate payers. And then conversely as well, I mean, the increase to tax rate, you see down below. So of a 4%, that equals one foot line. Yes?
Yes, sorry. Hi, thank you. Can we communicate this somehow, maybe? Rather than just in this meeting, like I do. Yeah, like, I think that would be better.
Let us take better way, Councilor. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. That's great. Like, I mean, I think this is good information. That's why we try and, you know, put this as a perspective.
I would love to really consider the consequences or repercussions of that. Good question, but I think we had some conversation about that.
I said I would take it away. I didn't say I do.
With all due respect.
So you can see here what that means to the city of Canora in terms of generating revenue. 8%, you know, we could generate 2.2 million, which is significant. Right now, our 1% tax increase is equivalent to $285,454. So, but what we have here is an explanation to kind of explain where we're at within the budget. So what you were seeing in that 468 page was a 12.96% increase. So how we get there is, we have the status quo and then we have our additional capital items. So you can see there that our additional capital items, well, the 23 capital program, 2.5, we take the status quo, which we had in last year's program, 1.1. It leaves us 1.3, which is additional 4.77. So I guess it's the 12.96 that was in what we had built as the budget. Now, we have the items in the unfunded list. So these were the items Kyle had mentioned that, you know, the timing wise, things that just didn't make it into the budget bill. And they're kind of outside of it. So we have the compensation review. So we plugged it in, administration's recommending 100% level, 395. There's a sustainable building budget, community budget of $75,000 in there. Community safety wellbeing position, which was approved on January 18th. So that's why it's a check mark, because it's approved already. And the KDSB land ambulance bill of 150 additional hours.
So I'll just add a little bit more context. So I did speak with CAO Henry Wall from KDSB. So basically, that is entirely driven, it is a 5.2% increase to the land ambulance. And I think he did share when he came and did his orientation session with council, significant strain under the land ambulance arm at KDSB right now, so that is all there. It's not in housing or social services or any of the other stuff KDSB does, it's just under the. Just gone down on Monday.
That's great.
Ryan, so just, did you have a question? So that's KDSB. So what we budgeted for 2023 for Northwest Health Unit and for District Home for the Age.
Right.
Have we, are those been confirmed yet, or are we just?
Haven't received anything else.
We'll have to wait and see what, what we've put in aligns with what.
Can you speak to what you put, like, we, I think we put a 3%.
Yes. So what we've done in absence of any of that information, we put 3% in. So that KDSB line for 150 takes into account the amount we have in the budget. So they, I think they went up by roughly 200. We had about 50 in.
Northwestern Health Unit did not increase this year, their levy.
I'm sorry.
Northwestern Health Unit did not increase its levy this year.
Thank you for that.
Can you say that again? Thank you.
So those are kind of earmarked as if, they're unchangeables. Required to pay and the, the well-being position was approved. So this gets us to 15.7%, which is a large number. It's quite, 4.4 million is what it comes out to.
So that means we need 4.4 million more than what we generated last year.
Great.
You're proposing.
We're proposing right now. Sorry, that's where we're at.
That's kind of where we're at. We're trying to kind of through the process. This is the 12.96 plus the unfunded items that were not built in. So we're kind of laying it out for everyone to see where we landed.
So just, so that's everything in. Okay, administration does not have anything else to add. That's, that's all in. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Great. So this is, we're trying to give a wholesome, you know, contr, like, big picture.
I just wondered about the salary for the community safety wellbeing coordinator. It's looking like still sitting at 87.6. I know we had a conversation in here about.
A revisit and I, we haven't talked about it since, and so I just.
Right. I think that's a, that's a very important note. So the way, the way you arrive at a salary is, the job is evaluated. It's evaluated against criteria. So those criteria set, set where you are on the grid. To adjust the salary for the one position means you're actually impacting those on the grid. Part of the conversation when you recognize a salary being lower is also part of the compensation review. The reason why it's lower is because that's where our salary grid puts it. So I think it's important that we don't see this community safety wellbeing position separate and apart from the challenges that all of those grids are having. And when you adjust one, you really kick out the balance for others. So part of the bigger discussion, and definitely can talk more about that if needed, but that's, that's why it's sitting at the rate that it's in.
Thank you. I just knew we didn't come back, so I thought it was important to. Yeah, thanks.
That's good. Right. Now, we have options to reduce the tax levy. So there, there's a number of items that we have identified here that we can use to reduce, reduce our P impact. I, I mean, there's reduction to capital. We can reduce our capital, the, the tax levy projects. We can, you know, look at debt and our reserves. But I'd like to caution that, you know, currently, the city of current doesn't have a policy per se around the debt and the reserves. We don't have limits set that are specific to the city of Canora. Now, there's provincial annual repayment limits that are, they're quite, you know, large. So I wouldn't use that as a specific guide for, for our municipality.
So Ryan, could you maybe give a specific example of, like, what, you know, a reserve, like, you would have a tax stabilization reserve that would be X amount of, you know, you're not taxed or something like that?
Absolutely. So best practice would state that your fiscal stabilization reserve, like your contingency or, or things of that nature should be set as a percentage of your tax revenue or rates. So either it's 10% or 15% or whatever it is that would sufficient, be sufficient to hedge any type of risks that could happen throughout the year. So those are the types of things that we, we need to develop and bring forward, that they're absent at this point. And that's hence the conservative approach to debt and reserve usage. We don't have a, a limit so that we can really be extremely, you know, use the efficiencies of that, that limit to be within. Hopefully, that's clear.
Councilor Meller, did you still have a?
I think my question was, is I think in order to create clarity going forward, it would be beneficial to have clear policies as to restrictions, unrestricted restrictions in regards to these accounts. Having them all loosey.
Absolutely.
So I would tell you that we anticipate doing a full sum reserve review and then there's also maybe a policy development piece that's gonna have to happen over the next 12 months. And that's gonna put both administration and council in a much better position to work through these types of things in the future. So just looking for those guardrails for everybody.
All right. That's good discussion. That's, that's, that's an important note to understand how, why, why you're seeing the, where things are. The second item here is we can, the OSIF funding that we received, we can take that in to, to offset. That's 1.2 million. We can apply reserve holiday. This was the, this amount of 316 was a allocation to the contingency reserve, parking reserve, and I think.
Capital facilities.
Capital facilities. So we can continue on with that same holiday that we took in 2022. And there's a tax write-off reserve. We're proposing that we, we can use that to help reduce the impact.
And so I wanna, I wanna explain a little bit about that specific reserve. So the concept behind this reserve came from the mill closure. And it was sort of like, when you go through a really, you know, a big shock like that, what would we do if warehouse or closed? Or what would we do if another big taxpayer closed, right? And so, so that's sort of been there and, you know, sort of looking for that economic tip shock. And we felt, and after talking with the outgoing treasurer, Charlotte Eady, about sort of the intent of the reserve and why I was there, we felt three years of assessment freeze by unpack, COVID-19 pandemic, you know, even though we haven't used it yet, that doesn't mean that we haven't had impacts on the budget over the past three years because of COVID. And also just with the global inflation and economy stuff, we really felt that there, you know, yes, it's not necessarily a big taxpayer disappearing from the tax hole. But we thought that, we felt that the logic was there to make this recommendation to council to use some of that reserve to hedge against the challenges that we're facing. So I wanted to add a little bit more background on that.
Councilor Bernal.
So is that the total amount of the reserve, Kyle?
There is more in there and we can get you the exact balance. I would share, again, we're trying to take a bit of a conservative approach because wanted to still make sure there was a balance there in the event that we lost a major taxpayer or in the event that we needed that money going forward. And Ryan, would you like?
There's a $1,029 in there.
Thank you, sir.
Total.
So the 375.
Yeah, so.
Extra. Roughly half.
Yeah.
Okay. So can you, one more question, sorry. The reserve holiday, the 316,000, what did you say that reserve?
So now, so what that would mean?
What were the reserve?
Oh, a contingency reserve.
Yeah, okay.
A parcade reserve, I believe it's called, and the facilities reserve.
So just a reminder, if you go to appendix three, or appendix two, sorry, that's a high-level summary schedule of our reserve funds. They're not broken up. You won't see parcade, you won't see contingency. Ryan has done his best to group those based off of purpose. So that's what we're talking about. Like, you know, I talked to you the other day, but you know, we have this Husky the Musky Reserve with 32 American dollars in there. We're trying to simplify, consolidate to a point that makes more sense. So that's sort of the first effort that Ryan has made here to kind of group things. But just if you're wondering, well, why don't I see parcade? Why don't I see contingency? That's why. Okay?
That's what I made.
Yep.
Just, and that decision was made last year because we looked at those three particular reserves and they were just really healthy. So the parcade example is one where I think that reserve was sitting at 1.3, 1.4. It was growing year over year. When we look at the expenditures that we had there, we figured that it would use a holiday, okay? Similarly, Art Center, okay? Art Center's brand new. We were contributing $37,500 towards that, you know, that was sort of the rule of thumb that we applied. Newer building, they've got some reserves sitting there. We're not putting them at risk by, by putting a holiday on it. And I kept speaking to the other one, Art Contingency was also healthy too, but that, like, that was the thought that went behind that holiday for those three particular buckets.
Okay, thanks, Dave. And, and I think it's a really good example, you know, just to reiterate some of the stuff that I was saying earlier. We don't do a lot of set it and forget it. Oh, we contributed to this reserve every year. We'll just do it again. We try to look critically at every decision that we're making. And in case of last year, we felt it was proven to take a holiday.
So the items we have listed here, you know, come up to 7.69%. So if you recall, we were up to 15.7. So if we take that 7.69, we're back down to 8%. Now, this isn't the exhaust, an exhaustive list of reductions. You know, the cap, the reductions to capital, if I may flip back, these would be the, the capital projects that are funded by tax levy. So if we were to make a direct cut to, to a project to specifically lower the tax levy, it would be to one of these projects. Keeping in mind the checkmarked projects are required. So if that was a specific decision, that would be, these would be the projects you'd be looking at. Now, I have listed on there debt and reserves, so we would, we could also make a decision to change the financing sources of these. We could say we want 250 to go or go wherever we're comfortable with going to debt versus the net tax levy.
And the one, one last point that I wanna make on, on capital, just so you know. So two options that we presented you were the, we're using all the OSIF funding that we received from the province, which was sort of unexpected. Really happy to get that funding source. And the reserve holiday, between, if you made those two decisions, that would actually create a net zero impact of the capital program on the tax levy. So that would mean that we're not spending any more on, we're not putting any more pressure on the tax levy for capital infrastructure. So it would basically be a net zero by 2022. But the only way that we're able to do that is because we have new funding sources to sort of bring down that impact on the tax levy. But I say that just so that you realize, if you wanted to carry out this capital program that we've proposed, we can do that without any effect to the taxpayer. I think that's a really important distinction I just wanna make.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I think I should also note, when I talk, when we talk about debt, we have about approximately 6.8 million in debt for 2023. Over the next five years, we're planning to add 22 million. And on top of that, we have an asset from the hospital, which, which may, which may be an impact there as well. So just to kind of throw that out there. Finally, we come down to the reductions to operative. There's some specific reductions possibly in the compensation review, sustainable operating budget that we had flashed earlier in the unfunded list. And I, alternatively, there's additional reductions we could make if it's a council will to, you know, reduce further in our operation.
So I think, I think the main point is we can work with you and support you to get where you need to be. There's, there's different options available. So it's really about where we wanna put the emphasis. Do we feel good about the capital program? Do we wanna spend some time going through operating? Do we wanna have a conversation about these individual decision points? Maybe that's the best place to start. But that's, this is sort of where we wanted to get to in the first half hour. So maybe comments or thoughts?
Councilor Manson.
First of all, this is just my view, not council's view. But as a municipal counselor and a representative of our taxpayers, we should take on the task of finding any efficiencies in our budget and to control the spending. Due to recovering from COVID, our present economy, our seniors and low-income housing that are financially suffering, government cutbacks and a number of other factors, myself personally, I cannot in all honesty approve any budget that doesn't have a 3% attached to it. So we need to decide what we want to approve and what we may have to wait on, solely on what we can and cannot afford. Tax mayor's money is not the city's personal piggyback to do projects, whether we can afford it or not. And we really need a concerted effort to review the budget with savings in mind and a priority list. Maybe next year, if we have a larger tax base, we can relook at some of those items. Also, I don't think the payroll grid and our wage increases for management, management should be off the table at this time. We have to be proven prudent, but we also have to move the needle a little in all departments. We need to take an in-depth look at what our taxpayers can afford. We all have to face them on whatever decisions we make. Base our decisions on them, not on our wish list or vision at this time.
Councilor Ben.
This isn't like question rebuttal time, but I just wanted to, as a counterstatement to that, I don't have anything prepared, but as I said yesterday, there's sort of two ways we can look at making our decisions around the budget. We can make the decision based on what are, is aligned with our values. And the thing that I heard. based on what are, is aligned with our values. And the thing that I heard throughout the campaign was the city needs to do. The city needs to do. And X, Y, and Z attached at the end of that sentence. So while I understand the financial implications that are involved with making these decisions, I think it's, I don't believe it's prudent to make your decisions based on a final number, rather to make our decisions based on what are our values and what have we decided as a group based on consensus, as what are our priorities for this term moving forward. And it's, sorry, just add on to that. I think we've done, historically have done the budget this way. And what we've seen in a number of these stages is we should have been spending money here, we should have been spending money here, we should have been spending here. So we can keep passing the buck down the road, but I don't want my children's generation to be like, I wish my parents would have done this then, so that I didn't have to do it more.
Counselor Burney, please.
Yeah, I guess, I, thanks for both of your statements. I guess I'm somewhere maybe in the middle. You know, just the, the, when you set this up, Kyle, our SLT did a lot of work on this budget. And I mean, I came into this being a career cop, so I'm not going to come in here and say that, you know, I'm going to tell Ryan, or Kyle, or our, our, our staff professionals here, I'm not going to direct you. But that being said, you know, Barb's point's well taken, but at the end of the day, we're elected for a reason here. And, and your, you know, your comments really resonate with me. And I can, I can easily defend any position that, that we take or that I take. And I really believe that with, with all the, the issues that we're dealing with, as you mentioned, Ryan, to compare this to a household, you know, your cost of living, your insurance, your gas, your groceries, the city's not immune to this. We're, we're in a very, I'd say, enviable financial position. We've got some work to do. We have some, some things that we need to attend to. And to say that we can, we're not going to increase taxes, or it's going to be a minimum, that's not realistic. So we talk about, you know, issues in the community regarding community safety and crime. It's happening across the country. This is happening across the country. I, I just think it's, it's unrealistic to, I'm not, I'm not going to candy coat this to, to the citizens of Kenara. They all know, when they go to get gas, when they go to buy groceries, it's, it's affecting the community. It's affecting our country. And I defer to this, the SLT, I defer to you, Ryan, to the work that you've done bringing this to us to this point. And I, I support the budget largely as it is with some, you know, with maybe some tweaks here and there, but I think we have to spend to, to just really, the current climate dictates that we have to get, like, this was really meaningful to me. You said, is it 8% just to be, to provide the status quo from last year? So that's telling in itself. So I think to say that we're not going to, you know, there's not going to be an increase, or it's going to be a minimum, you know what I mean? People aren't going to be maybe happy with me, but I can justify that. I live that every day. We all live that every day, and we pay our expenses, you know, and we pay our bills at the end of the month. So it's our reality, and we have to face it head on. If we don't, we're going to pay now, or we're going to pay later. And we talk about attracting, you know, investment, and, and just the footprint, what we want to achieve in Kenara, that, that comes at a price. It doesn't come at a net zero. So that's my perspective. I certainly respect what, what, you know, my fellow councillors have said. I absolutely do, but that's how I look at it. And I'm one of six, you know, one of seven including the mayor, so I respectfully submit that.
Yep, thanks. Yep, okay. Counselor Koch.
Thank you. I would largely agree with Counselor Benningham and Counselor Burney, but, and I totally, totally hear where you're coming from on this, Counselor Mattson. I, I would also just add that if I look at the slide that was prepared that says, these are the projects with net tax levy implications, these are exactly the things that people were saying needed to be done while we were campaigning. This is exactly the list. North of the bypass roads, this road sucks, this road sucks, this road sucks, my basement flooded because storms or whatever. These are the things that people have been asking us for on the campaign, and I, I can't say, no, we're not going to do it. Thanks for, thanks for saying that, but yeah, this just doesn't sit right with me when this is what people have been asking for. Thank you.
So question, I, I'm going to, I'm going to cycle back to capital for a minute. I hate to keep harping on it, but just so I understand this, what I'm looking at, I guess, well, I guess it's the page, sorry, I guess that page. So that's without moving the increased funding from OSIF in, correct? Just so, just-
Yes.
So 1.361, and then it would be minus 1, 1.224, which is like 100 and some thousand, whatever, would be the, would be the impact on-
The reserve, the reserve holiday would make up the doormaker of the impact.
Yeah, but I, I'm just doing, just let me go through it one by one, so I'm on the same. So the OSIF funding, so if I, forget about the reserves and the tax write-off reserve, just the holiday and the reserve, and I look at OSIF funding of 1.224, and subtract it from the 2023 net tax levy increase of 1.361. So the difference is whatever, 100-
136,000.
136,000?
Yeah.
So we're doing, and I'm just trying to put this into context in that I, I, I look at it globally, all the budgets, but just on the capital right now. So 22 to 23, with all the things that we're looking to do, the cost to the taxpayer would be $136,000. Is that fair to say?
Correct, with the, with the OSIF infusion, yes.
Okay, no, I, okay, that's fine. I, I just wanted to, I was there, but I just wanted to confirm it, not, I just, I'm trying to put that into context when we're having these discussions, because we all know there's our roads and, well, we, we have an infrastructure deficit. It doesn't matter what it is, it's an infrastructure deficit. So all these projects and everything that we looked at on Monday, projects that we've committed to, or a previous council has, we've got grant money coming in, which it has to be spent, it's already committed. So all that work is costing the taxpayers an additional 136,000, or their bills.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think, I think to Mayor Poirier's point, that's the 2023 capital budget. We, we do have a five-year on the table. I understand that there may be some questions about particular projects in the five-year outlook. I want to reiterate, not set in stone, they're there really to help us forecast, and, and we, we sort of budget out five years on the capital side to make sure we can afford it. But, you know, there's two sort of separate issues that we would like to move forward with the capital budget, if, you know, when the council is, is comfortable. So I would sort of be looking for some direction from council, you know, do you want to review the capital budget any further? Do you want to dig in on the operating budget? What would be most beneficial for council at this moment?
Counselor Ben Bellinham.
I think one of the big items under capital projects for 2023 that stood out for me, and I think it's been echoed a few times, that did have a net tax levy implication, was the renovations at the operations center. And I'm wondering if there is a different way you can look at financing that. I'm not saying I'm against that project or anything, but that is almost a 1% increase just in that building. And I think about, again, the way that I look at it is because the value of that build is not going to only benefit the people of this year. That's something in theory that's going to be beneficial, or is that something that maybe a debt financing would, I know it's not a new, but anyways, though.
Yeah, yeah. We, we, so we, we could look to reserves, or we could look to debt. Would, would council like us to explore some options around both debt and, couple ahead?
So sorry, we're talking 242?
So 242 is the impact of the tax levy.
And what were those, refresh my memory, what were the renovations we were talking about?
Well, there's several aspects to it. It would be taking the engineering area and making it a large open space to support collaborative. We would be moving the building department into the main foyer, because they get the majority of the foot traffic. So it would be to provide better customer service there. It would be to take a large office and divide it by two, so that we're just getting, the office is too big essentially.
The big lunchroom, refresh, too?
We take that room that we were in when we had the facilitated session, we would move that training room to the other side of the hallway, which was the old file room, because we went through that electronic file system project this year. That training room would then be converted to some office space. And then where there's that really large lunchroom, we would make that offices there. And then where that lunchroom is, we would take those internal offices and make that a lunchroom meeting room. And then all of the mechanical and electrical upgrades and HVAC and all of that other stuff.
So thanks for that. I guess my, my question is, are you, what are you proposing, Counselor, that we defer this?
No, rather than using it just as a net tax levy, because right now our portion is, would be to the taxpayers of this year, 242, looking at alternative funding sources, whether debt or, or.
And if I could just speak to that, you'll recall at the bottom of that page, that there was about four different ways that we were sort of contributing towards that project, the final part being the percentage to tax levy or the value to tax levy. So.
Okay, thanks. So we'll try, we'll get an interest rate on the debt, and we'll look at reserve options as well.
Just a quick question. We have, actually, we have Counselor Moncrief on. Can we, or can we email her these pages? She doesn't have these.
So the two? You have, right?
The one that you sent?
Yeah.
Oh, she has these now? Okay, okay.
Counselor Jason.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just to weigh in on the previous conversation briefly, again, from the campaign trail and reiterating a lot of what you said, Counselor Ben Bellinham and Counselor Koch, that we were really elected to do some change here, not just push sort of a status quo mentality, trying to keep taxes low and cut costs, and not make the investments that we need to make to make sure that future generations are taken care of. So, so you know, I think behooves us to look at interest rates and maybe some debt financing options for some of these projects, specifically the operations renovations that we were just discussing. But, but overall, like you, Counselor Burney, I'm in support of this budget. I rely on you guys as professionals and your opinions. And there's, there's not much in this budget that I see that we, you know, that are nice to have, that are kind of must-do projects. So, and I think it's going to cost us now, or it's going to cost us more in the future. I personally would rather pay more now and less in the future, have, make sure that stuff is taken care of, because it will lead to better investment, attracting more, more people to come and work and play here, and, and make our city that much more appealing. So I think, I think it's something that we need to, to do. I, I don't think it's about trying to just keep a, a certain tax rate to increase number in line. I think it's, it is about values. It is about why we are elected, and not maintaining the status quo. Thank you.
Okay, so again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna circle back to the, the capital and that, because, and I'm not trying to just like shove that into council's face and make, make them approve that, but there, there is, if we don't do it in the near future, the capital, and, and because I, I, there's some things we need to discuss, like when we go in camera about, before we start putting our hand up and raising taxes at whatever, we, I think we, we need to have that discussion in camera, because there's some, there's some information that was submitted to the city. I think we need, but it'll have to be done in camera. So I'm not prepared to say, yeah, like, whatever, even with what Counselor Ben Bellinham said. I, I want to think about this, because it's a, it's a big number, okay? Let's be, let's be frank. And it's not about what we agreed to or not, because what I, I know what I agreed to, and that most of my stuff was on the infrastructure side, and I'm happy to take hits on that for increases to do, because to me, that's where we're really behind the eight ball. But I, like, I really think that we need to, like, on, on that piece itself, and we are, like, we have in camera tonight, we also have a follow-up meeting tomorrow. Doesn't mean we can't come to some consensus there, but it, it would be nice this evening for staff to know that, if, if it's possible, that, you know, on the capital side, you know, that's fine to move that to debt financing, that's, it's still going to get done, so the capital plan would still be approved. But if we wade into March, we won't be doing all this, because our costs will go up, because that one month lag, getting out to market for tenders, and that will cost us. And it has years gone by all the time, because we used to do this in April or May and scramble, and we were getting not good value for our money in that. Now we're in a position where we can do it a little sooner. And, and that's why I stress that, because I've just seen it work the other, the, the way we don't want it to work, too many years in a row, and it, and it's not an efficient way to do it, and that. So that's what I, like, like, up tonight, besides the other things that we're going to have to discuss, which are important too. And the operating budget's important. The, the issue with the, the capital budget, that is, it, because of the aggressive program we have this year, like, that's a lot of money, because it's not just one big project. It's like, I don't know, how many, like-
I'm going to say 50, 60?
Yeah, yeah. So there's a lot of documents that have to go out for pricing and so on and so forth. So I think the sooner we can task staff with, with starting to do that, I know they've started already, but to, to get some of those larger projects, the tenders out, I think it's, it's in the best interest of the city. And when we talk about value for money, even though we're spending lots of money in that, we want to get value for it. I think it's important that we kind of look at that. I personally, though, need to, need to wrap my head around the, the overall budget, like, and the increase in that. So just to know that I'm either comfortable with it or not. And I understand costs, because we all see them every day. But I, I'm just, like, I would, I would hope that we're not voting on that tonight, or getting some, or consensus. I think, I think we have to have that sober second thought, and think about, take a look at it. And it doesn't mean that tomorrow night won't be a different situation and that. But I'd like some time just to wrap my mind around it. So that's everything I have to say.
Counselor Koch.
Thank you. If I may, then I would propose we move into the operating section of the budget, so that we can just start those conversations for you and everybody to have that information. I think we're kind of at the end of maybe the big discussion period around the capital, just in the interest of time. I would feel comfortable moving on myself.
Yeah, we're happy to do that. And just a reminder, you know, we really made an effort to be able to present both to you at the same time, which hasn't always been the case. So Ryan, do you feel, let's, let's have it offered?
Yeah, if you want to miss that.
The other budgets, solid, vested, and sewer and water, they're very self-contained, so they're very different. So we'll get to those later.
So we got, we starting on page 18, that would be our first, 17 is the summary of all the functions together. 18 is the beginning of the individual functions. We have the corporate area. This area is primarily receives all the revenues. So we have our Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund in there, the power dam grants, some miscellaneous revenue. It would be like penalties, the citizen fund, investment income is in there. So generally just some of those one-off revenues. So it's fairly straightforward, so you can see what, what's changed there. Next area is the general government section. Next area is the general government section. So this section has two subservices, so we have mayor and council, and our organizational support. So you have the CAO, city clerks, HR, finance, our IT support is in there. So you can see the changes year over year in revenues, primarily a decrease in appropriation from reserve. And our expenses are increasing at $163,000. So we have a large, well, we have an increase in salary and benefits, appropriations to reserves, increase in travel and conference, software. You can kind of go through the list. One thing to note is our vacancy management. So we've increased that. And what vacancy management is, is there's general... Natural turnover that occurs with the organization. So you have savings from the turnover. So that savings is being captured in a vacancy management line. So it's a budgeted savings, so it's an efficient way of capturing that.
That way you're not over budgeting.
Can I just ask, there was about $100,000 in provincial and federal revenues in 2021. Can you speak to what that was and why?
The reduction?
In revenues, there was, under the 2021 budget, there was 89 from the federal government, 25.
Sure.
Was it for the election?
I believe those are actually grant, those are grants that have come off the books.
Okay.
Yeah, for programs.
Yeah, and we do have this, there's some cyclical expenses in there for the election, so as you mentioned. So the way these, the functions are set up is you can see the subservices at the bottom. So you'll be able to see the mayor and council and the support costs.
So, and I just saw a sticky in here and that, I don't have the corporate page.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's not in my budget and I...
Is it missing?
Well, it is on mine. I don't know why, but...
I'll make a copy.
I don't have it.
I'll just make a copy rather than...
Make it to...
I don't have 17 and 18. I've got page 16, then I go to 19. And I actually made the change, I changed out all the sheets the other day. And I still didn't have them. But I had a note here to ask that I thought on Monday.
Yeah, there was a bit of a... Would you like to wait to make a quick look at that or would you like to continue on?
Well, I'll take a look at it after and then if I have any questions I can ask. But just, yeah, sorry to interrupt, just continue on.
No, no problem. So there's a number of miscellaneous expense increases in here. Software, legal, advertising, some of the audit fees have gone up. Conversely, we have elections expenses, which I mentioned, have gone down. Contracted services, increase in recoveries gone, has occurred. So there's come up ins and outs and it gets us to $163,000 increase year over year. Protection. We're missing Dave Pratt. Oh, is he online? Would Dave like to speak to his area?
If you can, I can speak quickly, certainly.
Yes, please.
Good evening, your worship councillors. I basically, when I kind of got into the budget process late, but with our master fire plan coming to council hopefully in February and March, I spoke with the SLP team and Kyle basically said that we would just have a status quo budget knowing that there'll be many decision points that council will have to make in the upcoming year that will affect our operating and capital budget requests moving forward. So we're content for 2023, just to have a status quo budget and we'll see what guidance we get from council moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. There's no questions on the protection side and we can move to transportation. Would you like to speak to transportation?
Well, I guess most of the expenditures, especially in the operating budget, related to transportation that E and I looks after, the roads, bridges, engineering, winter control, and street lighting and garage. So there are a few pockets in there of transit and docks and wherse and parking that are handled by other departments. Primarily, when we look at our budgets for operating and transportation, it'll be your normal annual maintenance, potholes, graveling, you know, grading, roadside vegetation control and whatnot. So I don't think there's a lot of room in this specific budget to do much with in terms of keeping a level of service for this specific set of assets on the roads. So, you know, we're looking at quite a vast array of different tasks, especially under the roads and bridges section. You can kind of see the list. I'm not going to name them all off there. But the first category right at the top of the page is quite extensive in terms of the amount of effort that goes into, you know, maintaining roads, everything from sidewalks, curbs, vegetation, pothole patching, et cetera, dust control and so on. So I think it would be a mistake to kind of, you know, reduce any of these types of services for any kind of savings. Obviously, I think the residents are expecting a certain level of service in terms of maintenance of the road system. So, you know, I'm not coming to the table here with any kind of carrots to look at in terms of savings, in terms at least of the operating for the road systems.
So the next function?
Question, just, and you can take it away and just if I could get... I'm just, on that one, the increase in salary and benefits at $803,000, I guess, it's 802.
Robert, are you prepared to speak to that?
Yeah, well, but I like specifics and I'd like to see, because that's almost like 8% of the overall transportation budget, or, well, maybe not quite that, maybe 7%. It just seems high as an increase and I'd like to know why. Like, because I know salary increases are not anywhere near that, like, you know, perched up there. And it just, it stood out to me, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely. So this year, when we took a look at the budget, we really wanted to make sure that we were being holistic in the way that we accounted for our position. So before, you may have one position that's split up across several different departments at various FTE values, so 2%, 3% all over the place. What that meant was you couldn't really ever track the amount of salaries or how those positions were being used in an efficient way. It was difficult for the leaders because they were spread out over many different accounts, sometimes not even in their area. So how did you know that you were getting close to, you know, meeting your budget or if you had savings in your budget? And so that was resulting in a lot of inefficiency in our salary and benefit budget because we were either leaving a whole bunch on the table because we didn't realize it was in another account that was not ours or we were overspending potentially because we couldn't see it. So this year, we really went to realign those salaries. So what you're going to see is if you tracked year over year, you would see some of those other departments actually decrease in the FTE or in those salary and benefit dollars. And transportation, because of all the different services that are there, increased because instead of having their salaries spread out, it actually moved forward. So you can see that more when you look at the total salary and benefits that increased versus department-specific.
And so, Roberta, can you maybe speak to, you know, why would we have, you know, the 2%, 3% little bits everywhere in the first place? And it's sort of, you know, it's important for council to understand.
I think it's an evolution of our systems and our ability to report. So previously, when we didn't have the system functionality that we have today, the only way you could is if you actually broke it down and you counted for it under each section. Today, we can actually divide an FTE without physically dividing it. We can report on it in a variety of different ways without actually having to separate the FTE. So it wasn't that it was a necessary evil to actually account for a small chunk of the service, winter maintenance or grass cutting. In order to count for that, even though it's more than one person, the person's actually working in both services at different points in the year, we had to spread it out just to say, get the true value. Today, because of our system functionality, we can report properly so that a leader knows, I have these people showing up, this many salaries, and then I can tell you from a service level, by using the system, how much we spent per service. Answer the question?
So this is sort of about bringing some FTE home, I guess, is the best way to go?
It's about really making sense of, yes, the budgets that are attached.
So did, because that may cross over into water and wastewater and, or like...
No, we have those whole. So if it was charged to the utility, it still remains.
So there was no reduction on any of those other two utilities?
No, no.
Because that's actually where we should be throwing some of it.
Yeah, so we're careful about the user, you know, fee generate, like on the utilities side. Keep them whole, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Next section is recycling. Recycling falls within our tax-supported section of the budget. It's not inside the utility. So is there anything you would like to speak on this?
Yeah, recycling, I guess, is a bit of a different beast. We currently are obtaining about 50% of our expense coverage through the WDO, which is Waste Diversion Ontario. So that's where most of this revenue is coming from at this point, is kind of the 50% coverage from the producers who, through WDO, we get reimbursed with. Going forward, things are going to change here effective July 1st. Producers are supposed to be taking over 100% of the recycling. And we are still in the midst of negotiations and agreement reviews and whatnot with Circular Materials who'll be taking over from the Waste Diversion Ontario system. And the plan is, is through regulation, through the provincial government, that the producers are supposed to be paying 100% of the recycling costs. So, again, we're still in the midst of trying to get final agreements vetted, reviewed, questions answered from Circular Materials, and trying to tally up the potential 100% costs that they're claiming that they're going to be providing the municipalities for recycling services. So, not much more to say other than that. Hoping that, you know, effective July 1st and going forward in future budgets, that, you know, recycling will be able to potentially come right off the tax levy and be fully, you know, producer-covered and paid going forward. But again, that won't happen until any earlier than July 1st of this year.
Okay. So we took conservative.
There's a, so councillor Moncrief, can you hear me?
Yes, again.
Do you have a question?
I did. Marco, can you just tell us why recycling is separated out?
From the solid waste.
Solid waste.
It's taken out because I believe the funding, whereas solid waste in terms of garbage collection and waste collection, it's a user-paid system based on bag tags and tipping fees. Where recycling is a bit of a different beast in we're getting different funding streams from government agencies and producers and whatnot. So we have to make up the balance of recycling through, or not user fees, but taxation levies, whereas the garbage is fully funded via user fees. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but...
It does, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, so we've, on the recycling side, on the revenue side, we've tried to be conservative, you know, sort of like, don't want to count your chickens before they hatch. You know, I've definitely seen situations where, you know, you sort of try to overshoot a little bit on the revenue projections and then you get to the end of the year and, you know, your budget doesn't balance. So while we believe that there is going to be some revenue coming in there, we haven't accounted for it here. And if this is new for the whole province too, everybody's moving to this producer model. So just, again, just kind of didn't want to count our chickens before we hatch, but there may be a little bit of good news there by the end of the year.
Yeah, I think until we get some concrete agreements in place and we get a little bit more firm with Circular Materials and discussing those, you know, contributions to recycling that they're planning on giving us, we're kind of keeping our cards close to our chest until we, you know, we get a little bit further into the process. We are kind of at the 11th hour, seeing this July 1st deadlines looming quite quickly here. So, you know, we're trying to work as best and as quickly with them as possible and try and get over the hump here and get the agreements in place so we have a better picture, you know, effective July 1st on where that recycling program's going to go in terms of funding and revenue.
Thanks, Marco. Next we have?
Cemetery. First of all, Ryan, thank you for creating these summary sheets because they're way more easy to read than the three inches of material that we're used to. This is an interesting page because usually when you would look at a revenue and expense center, you would have a full page or multiple pages. And I think what this illustrates, and you correct me if I'm wrong, with the cemetery, the goal is always to net to zero. So it has revenue, it has expenses, but it's subsidized by council, okay? So that difference is what we're showing here, correct?
Yeah, that's our contribution.
Yeah, so when I started, I realized that our rates were not really closely aligned with market rates. So we did a really deep, thorough study twice, put forward some recommended rate increases, which were approved by council. The last one was a multi-year one, so 2022, 2023. So what you're seeing on this page is that the level of subsidy is actually going down year over year from the city. So it's going down $51,000 as a result of revenues going up. Rec and culture. Lots going on here. Where my mind always goes is to look for the major deltas and sort of look to explain those major differences. As you can see here, utilities are going up. For the city, the largest contributor to energy costs are going to be your sewer and water plant and your recreational facilities. It's always that way. So when we look at, actually, when we started the discussion today and we were talking about natural pressures to overall expenses, utilities are a big one this year where gas and electricity is going up 12% and 13%. So that's how it's manifesting itself in that $90,000 pressure there. In terms of contractor services, we've got some adds. The adds being, we've got the pocket park going in, so now we're going to have to have third-party contractor. They manage the cleaning services related to our outdoor washrooms. So that would be true for our ball diamonds, for our beaches, for our parks. This is just going to be added to that particular contract. The other thing is, last year, we entered into a new cleaning contract. So there was some natural cost creep that was going on related to that project or that service. And, yeah, revenue's up because user fees are going up. In the rec space, we would have looked at everything but swimming and tried to adjust our rates up because, again, we had certain levels of subsidy that we were trying to target. So we tried to close the gaps on that. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Just on the utilities, like, what's the... Because I just pay them at home and that, I don't even, like, it just doesn't matter anymore. Like, what's the biggest cost driver there? Is that like natural gas?
It's both, and the predictions are really scary looking forward, quite frankly. What happened, just so council can be aware, is you'll hear about LED projects that we're doing to try to save our utilization costs. When we started to really look at our bills, we realized that there was a line in there called the global adjustment policy. So I went, okay, what the hell's that? Sorry. And as we dug into it, we could go and we could implement all of these energy efficiency initiatives from a capital standpoint, but our bills were not being adjusted as much as what you would have thought. And the reason that was, was the global adjustment policy was at, or rate was actually staying fairly high. So when we dug into it, we realized that that is a deal that OPG and Hydro One did when they did all these green energy projects. So that is the cost that they have to pay back to these producers to sort of fulfill their obligation. So we actually got some pressure on the province back then. That was about three years ago and we saw that global adjustment come way, way down. But now everything's coming back up again. So, and looking forward, they're talking like 10... So, and looking forward, there's, they're talking like 10, 12% per year going over the next five years. So it, for a city, it's very significant. Councillor Van Bellingham?
I know, sorry, this isn't operating related, but I know that we had some construction capital projects in regards to the rec center, are there any green or energy efficiencies, like, being associated with that?
So we just came across a whole bunch of that stuff, so, but to do that, you have to establish a baseline status, we're actually doing that this year, so that we can illustrate what we're doing as a result of the savings. Do you remember what this, we got like an 80% credit or something like that?
Like what we call?
Yeah, but it's big, so we're on it, it's not built into this, because we really don't know what it's going to be, but we're going to pool all of that, and we're going to do what we can, and we work with VIP Energy Services, I think that's what they're called, out of Toronto. So, so we, we have to do energy audits on a semi-annual basis, so we kind of push all this data, and then they, they kind of crunch our numbers to see what's going on, and we look to them to help guide us, and then they also, if there's grants that exist, they bring those grants forward and help us with the application, so we get $50 and that sort of thing. So we do what we can, but, you know, utilities are a big cost to municipality. Planning and development, I'll try my best, because I just got it. Major swing there, so expenses, you noticed a $2.25 million change from the previous year, that's related to the Town Island sale, so that was a one-timer, so that's why you're seeing that.
I can speak to the, this is a great example of the decrease in salary.
Yes, I was gonna say, thank you.
So here's one where you would have seen salaries decreased by $100,000, that's because there was little bits of FTE that were being charged to this department that were now put in the correct department. So that's just a further than example.
And we're actually showing legal going down, is that what I'm seeing?
Correct.
It's always nice.
Oh, wow, okay. And contracted services. I don't really, I mean, if anybody has any specific questions, I would dig into it. Again, I've just kind of adopted this department, so I apologize.
I have a question.
Is councillor?
I'm sorry, this is summary here, and I just, I'm not seeing it. The Northwest Business Center is no longer in the BDC building, is there a, like, we're not spending X number of dollars on a lease, so I don't know what the arrangement was there, but I was thinking about it.
Yeah, so, so, good question, so that lease hit expired, and what we've done is we've gone into a hybrid model. So we've actually moved into the Bannister Center, where Ed Water Health used to be, and we're co-located with the BDC, which we were before, and the Innovation Center. So it's a brand-new office that's been done, it was, I, ten years, I want to say, and whoever works there works in a hybrid, so they, there's two cubicles there, they sign in, they sign out, if you're doing client meetings, you do them there, and it's worked out really well for us. And one of the key roles for the Northwest Business Center is to sort of act like a quarterback. If somebody comes in, you get information, and either you deal with them yourself, or you hand them off to another agency. In the Bannister Center, we've got LOPICS in there, we've got a law firm, we've got an accounting firm, so it gives us the benefit of other professional services all in one space.
Thanks.
Thank you, Stacey. So the next section we have is the external. So this is where our contributions to the external organizations lie. You'll see in here, our OPP, our Northwest Health Unit, Land Abundance, Ontario Works, this is where this lies. You can see that the OPP had a slight decrease in expense this year from previous year, but that's, that's what lies in the external function. So in terms of operating, that's, that's, that's what we have for you today.
And so with the $300,000 discount that we received from the OPP as a result of the billing model, and with the increases that we've seen, we were about evened on 2022 levels, so this is not driving, this is not driving additional expenses this year, which is unusual.
Okay.
Councillor Koch, and then councillor Van Bellingham.
Thank you, I just would share for councillors who may not be aware, I did say that the Northwestern Health Unit is not increasing its levies this year, but this is also the final year of the provincial mitigation funding in response to some provincial changes that are happening with the cost shared model, so next year, there will likely be a different number in front of us.
Hopefully not.
Right, further to that, that would be the 3% that I had mentioned earlier, right? In the absence of that information, we'd probably 3%.
Yeah. Councillor Van Bellingham?
Again, probably the lone wolf here, but the most consistent expense I see throughout this is wages, and I will put it on the table again, and I'm hearing it from the taxpayers, and I understand all the reasons why we shouldn't do this, but just on a monetary value, wages should be frozen on the grid this year. They can still get their 1.5 increase. Just throwing it out there. That's it.
Yeah, good, councillor Van Bellingham?
I just, just for historic, being universal, but when do we generally get a actual from these organizations-ish?
Probably the wrong person to ask.
Sometimes it's between the first and second quarter, kind of late first quarter, early second quarter, they're going through budgets around the same time as we are, so that's just why it's a little bit, they do, they do their best, and I mean, as soon, as soon as they, we know, they generally try to communicate, OPP is a little bit better, they usually get us in September, October, so we have foresight there, but the others sort of are doing the budget around the same time.
So I'm assuming the Health Unit will...
November.
Sorry?
November, I sent it.
Yeah.
That's more to the OPP and Health.
And we're a little lagged this year, you know, typically the last couple years, we've been trying to present capital in December and operating shortly after.
There's no question for councillor Van Bellingham?
No.
Okay, so is that a good job, by the way, in that, because like, you saved, well, besides the paper, you saved at least two and a half inches of pages that I don't think were required, but anyways, great job. Any other questions? So, did you want to...
I think, Kelly, you said supper's at seven. Could, could we take a five minute? Could we take five minutes? Love your right.
Let's do it, okay? Okay, so we're back in session. So moving on to item number two, motion to adjourn to close session, so resolution number one.
Thank you, Your Worship. I move resolution number one seconded by Councilor Van Bellingham, that pursuant to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended, authorization is hereby given to committee to move into a closed session at 6:28 p.m. to discuss the following items: Labor relations. Labor relations and trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board which, if disclosed, could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons or organizations. So there's two matters.
Thank you. Call the vote, all in favor?
That was a multiple.
I just want to make sure you said.
Thank you.
Andrew, the meeting's tomorrow at what?